Board of County Commissioners meeting, regular session to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by invocation by Commissioner Davy Jones.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow our heads and pray, please. Starting with Ephesians, Chapter 1, verse 18 and 19 for a reading. I pray that the eyes of your heart will have enough light to see what is the hope of God's call, what is the richness of God's glorious inheritance and among believers, and what is overwhelming greatness of God's power that is working among us believers. This power is conferred by the energy of God's powerful strength. With that reading, Father, we just invite you to bring that strength into this meeting. We'd ask that you would guide and direct us and be a part of our decision-making process today, Father. We give you thanks for the abundance of moisture. We give you thanks also for looking out for the well-being of our people from Fannie County. So today, Father, as we join at this meeting site, we again invite you to be present. Give you thanks for that today in Jesus's name. Amen.
Today, we will follow the published agenda without changes. We first have on our meeting agenda the consent agenda, approval of the minutes, payables, tax rule changes, and CBDG, CDBG semi-annual report. Commissioners, a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that the consent agenda be approved. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. There is a period of opportunity here for public comment. Anybody wish to address the question about non-personnel matters in a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to our business items. And first up is a request for a new FCCA board member. Good morning. Please let the public know who you are.
Hi, I'm Patty Thummel. I am the Executive Director at the Senior Center. I am here today to ask for approval of a new board member. It's Brenda Unruh. She lives here in Garden City. She will be replacing Darlene Lucas, who resigned. Brenda would start August the 17th. Her term would end December 31st of 2024.
Questions from the Commission?
You're fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When you're prepared, I'll offer a motion.
I am prepared.
I offer the motion to approve the nomination of Brenda Unruh to the Board of... Think of the proper title here. The Aging Board has a member to fill an unexpired term.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that Ms. Unruh be appointed back to the Board as indicated in our packet. Any further discussions? Apparently it was required. No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Larry Jones was absent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patty.
Next on our business agenda is a road petition. And from the time of setting the agenda until today's meeting, Madam Clerk, it's my understanding that the petition has been withdrawn?
That is correct.
Is there anyone here to hear any evidence on that petition? All right. This Commission will consider the petition withdrawn. And the petitioner is released from the bond if one was filed. Very good. Next on our agenda is consideration from Neighborhood Services. Trent, good morning. Please announce yourself for the public and tell us what you have.
Good morning. I'm Dante Thompson. I'm a planner with Neighborhood Development. So ProState Surveying on behalf of Colby Talbot is requesting to plat the Talbot Acres addition. The property is generally located one mile north of Highway 156 and a half mile south of East Low Road at 5120 North Towns Road, Fannie County, Kansas. Lot 1, Block 1 contains approximately 26.56 acres. The property is currently zoned a agricultural district and will need to be rezoned before the issuance of any building permits. There is currently a home, garage, and barn on the south end of the property, and the property owner currently has no future plans. The second smittle was presented for plat review on July 25th, 2023, and met requirements. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the plat on July 20th, 2023 meeting. There are two alternatives in front of you. The governing body may approve the parcel plat, and second, the governing body may not approve the parcel plat. And staff recommends Alternative 1, approval of the parcel plat.
Comments from Commissioners?
Just a clarification. This... I'm familiar with the property. This does not include any cultivated land, just the pasture to the north side of the...
Yes. Yep. From what I understand, yep.
And my only comment, Mr. Chairman, is I did attend a Planning Commission meeting, and there was very little comment about it. And it was unanimous vote by them to recommend that. So I would, unless Larry has come in... I'm sorry, I got ahead of myself. I would move that we approve... Excuse me. Approve this plat.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve 2023-33 per flat, Tab of Peakers, as presented. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up, Robert, do you have the appointment of Community Corrections Board?
Good morning, Commissioner. Stephanie Rausch, Assistant Director, Fannie County Department of Corrections, Youth Services and Community Corrections. The 25th Judicial District Community Corrections is requesting the reappointment of Kim Fisher to the Community Corrections Advisory Board in accordance with KSA 75-5297. Kim has served on our Board for 10 years. She has been a great asset to our Board, and we are asking for reemployment for her. It will be for a two-year term.
Questions of the Board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we reappoint Kim Fisher to the 25th Judicial District Community Corrections Board.
For a two-year term?
For a two-year term, thank you.
Is that motion seconded?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that two-year term to the Community Corrections Advisory Board. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. We're back.
What do you have for us?
The second item I have is we're asking the Commission for a signatory approval to move salary and benefits out of our carryover reimbursement fund... reimbursement budget, I apologize, to the Kansas Department of Corrections grant. This will fund two of our licensed addictions counselors. The Kansas Department of Corrections has authorized this budget adjustment. The unexpended funds that we are requesting to move are from an ISO position that was vacant for most of FY '23. If we do not spend these funds, we will have to return them to the state. So we're asking to move the amount of $42,366.98.
Would you repeat that amount?
$42,366.98. I believe on the old paperwork, it was showing $40,604.59.
And that is where we provided each of the Commissioners with the corrected application this morning? It says "Pathway for Success" at the top?
So the action requested here is a motion to... Direct us just a little bit more.
Would be to approve that and authorize the Chair to sign.
Okay, I'll offer the motion as suggested by Dory.
And I would second that in clarifying that the Chair is to sign for the amount of $42,366.98.
Been moved and seconded to correct the Grant Budget Amendment Report, authorizing the Chair to sign for a total amendment of $42,366.98. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commission.
Do you have... Need one copy or two? Next on our agenda is to hear from the local health board. Director of the Fannie County Health Department, Shruti. Good morning. Please announce yourself for the public.
Good morning. I'm Shruti Chabra, Director of Fannie County Health Department. And I'm here to request the...
I'm sorry, Shruti. Mr. Chairman, may I be so rude to interrupt and suggest that in our rules, one time a year, we're supposed to convene as a Board of Health? And this might be an opportune time. Is that correct, Mr. Administrator?
Correct.
And this item is being approved by the local Board of Health, so that's an appropriate action?
So I would offer a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we recess as a Board of County Commissioners and that we reconvene as a Board of Health for Fannie County.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn as a county commission and take up our work and convene as the local Board of Health. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. And Shruti, I apologize for interrupting you.
Motion carries. And we are now sitting as the local Board of Health. Please proceed.
Thank you. KDIC has a workforce development grant that is available for four years. We have access to $151,495.93 of funding. And we are requesting the Board approve that we apply for this funding. We are requesting $45,000 for year one. And based on the results from year one, we will be able to request for the rest of the amount for use in years two to four. The focus of the funding is going to be on workforce development through training, through strategic improvements, improved operational readiness for the organization, and also working on behavioral health capabilities within the organization to meet the needs of the community.
Any further work that we need to do as the local Board of Health?
I would ask... Just ask... Have a question about her request, Mr. Chairman.
Do we want to take that up in regular session of the Commission or as a local health? Very good. Yes, sir.
My question is, is this a competitive grant? How certain are we that we would be granted these funds?
It's a non-competitive grant. So that is the amount that is allocated to the county. And that's the ceiling of the amount.
Yeah, I wasn't quite clear on that, how that worked. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
I would offer the motion to approve the grant request and authorize the Chairman to sign.
I would second that.
Been moved and seconded that the application be authorized and the Chair to sign the budget request for workforce development grant as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll sign.
Thank you.
Any further work for the local Board of Health? Move to adjourn?
Now, Mr. Chairman, I'll offer a motion to recess as a Board of Health and reconvene as the Fannie County Board of Commissioners.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourn as to the local Board of Health and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners of Fannie County, Kansas. Any further comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now back in regular session. Thank you, Shruti. Good luck with getting that grant. If I understand Commissioner Pishney correctly, it's a lock. We get it. That's wonderful news. Next item on the agenda is a review of the new medical director for the county. And Madam Clerk, I understand that that request for action by the Board of County Commissioners has been requested to be held. And as Chairman, I'm going to table that until the next meeting. County Counselor, would you please work with EMS and see what the issues are as far as getting that contract hammered out?
We're currently working on that one. I think we're waiting on some information back from the medical group on the other end of it at this point in time. And we'll try to get that worked out before that next meeting.
Thank you. I think for purposes of the public, I want them to know that as Chairman, I want to do business with an individual and not with the company as far as a medical director. That's subject to the whims of the other Commission, the Commissioners, but that's what I'd like to do.
Skylar's back there.
Skylar, did you need to address the Commission on this contract?
Yeah, Kara is right.
Please announce and wait until you can be microphoneed.
Yeah, Skylar with EMS. Kara is correct. We want to do a further review on that contract. I agree with you in the stance that I would like to be contracted with an individual, not with a group like that. And so I'm waiting on their feedback from that. That's the delay.
Well, we'll do a quick turn on it and put it on the agenda for the 17th.
We should... Yeah, we should be... I fully expect to be able to do it there from there. So, yeah. And I do have a... I'm not without a medical director. I have one. He's just... We need him more than for him. And he'll stay on as long as he needs to.
Thank you. All right. Next item on our agenda is from Emergency Management, Paul. And we're going to take up not only the 16-2023 emergency declaration, but also 18-2023 on 2008 West Mary Fire Emergency Resolution. Would you please address the Commission as to those resolutions?
I'm Paul Restly, the Emergency Manager. On the 27th, we had the storms go through, greatly impacted up around Friends, and then it kind of tracked southeast towards 156, suffered extensive damage. We lost, I believe, about 103 distribution power poles and three 115 H-frame poles from sunflower transmission lines. Not counting the number of crops and the buildings that got destroyed. And then later in the evening, we had a massive amount of flooding, which impacted, I don't know how many basements throughout the area, as well as a number of vehicles that got stalled. And we were using our big trucks to get people out and rescue them. We had a lot of folks involved with that as well. And then on just last Friday, we had a fire out here. It started at 4:45 at 2008 West Mary. The farther we got along into it, we realized we needed some specialty equipment. That's why I asked for a declaration. We couldn't get the bales, cardboard bales, out of a regular dump truck, so we needed special end gates on these trucks to get them out. The stuff was taken down here to the rodeo grounds. Just was contacted earlier today. They will have all that stuff out of there Wednesday and Thursday of this week. They're going to bring in equipment to clean it up, so...
Are they the owners?
Pardon?
They being the owners?
Yes, yes.
Very good.
Very, very cooperative. We had to ask for mutual aid from Scott City and Holcomb because our firefighters were wearing out. We had... This thing started at 4:45 Friday morning. We didn't finish up operations until about 11:45 that evening, so... Or that night, so... Made for a long day for everybody, a long hot day, so...
Questions for the... For Paul?
Paul, on the resolution about the storm damage from two weeks ago, it's my understanding that a lot of the residents are having trouble finding a place to dispose of the wreckage. Is... Do you know anything of that?
I have not heard of anything like that. I know there's... The landfill can't take it.
They're restricting, I think, to just a very few loads at a time.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything on that.
I didn't know if that was something you could be involved with or...
Yeah, I haven't... I haven't heard anything on that, but I can check with the landfill and see what's going on there. To allude back to the email that I know you guys all received from some people out here on towns. I had contacted Red Cross. Methodist disaster was also involved. They had some pretty stringent criteria that they have to meet in order to be able to come in. I did go out and meet with the folks on Donna. You know, they're very, very receptive that somebody come out and spoke with them. You know, they had most of their damage all cleaned up. It's just... It's hard when Red Cross and Methodist requires 18 inches of water, and they only got a couple inches in there. And I can't answer how many basements were like that. I know there was people that had water that never had water before. But when water's running from business to business down on Kansas, it's a little difficult to know how many people were impacted by all that, so...
Further questions?
Paul, on the fire, do you have any idea what caused it? No, it's still under investigation. First look at it is it appears to be their pallet chipper that they use to chip their pallets up is what started it. But Fire Marshal is still investigating. That's kind of his first thought as well, was a chipper. But they want to try to get the best results that they can. I wasn't aware of this, but it's... Wasn't the pallets that were burning? No, it was cardboard bales that caught on fire. And I don't know how many removed that we took out to the rodeo arena. We're guessing between 300 and 400 bales, possibly. We don't know how many were sitting in there. You know, when we thought we were finishing operations, it's about 8 o'clock, we got into it, and it was still hot in there, so... They were... The owners were very, very cooperative, very helpful with everything, and we had a lot of great help out there, so... But just all the water that got poured on there, it was a little hard to get some of the equipment around, and we were running out of room to put some of the unburnt bales, so that's why we asked for the resolution, so...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If you want to take those resolutions up one at a time, I'd like to address the first one on the storm.
Please proceed.
Resolution 16-2023, I'm going to move to approve it, but I want to make the comment that by that declaration does a number of things that the community may not be aware of. Paul mentioned a bunch of some power lines being down. That resolution allows the power company to work extended hours on beyond what the Kansas Corporation Commission holds them to, so they can work kind of around the clock if need be. It also protects volunteers from liability and so on. So with that statement, I'll offer the motion to approve that resolution. And for the Chairman to be authorized to sign it.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 16-2023, Severe Weather Emergency Resolution, Rising from Weather on the 21st day of July 2023 here in Fannie County. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And while you're signing that, Mr. Chairman, I... And Paul just mentioned the house call that I was going to highlight, but he does make house calls, and I was impressed with that. And it did. It gave some peace of mind because that family had kids in the basement and glass and water was coming over the kids. And so they were traumatized, and I appreciate Paul responding to that.
I had water in my basement, and he didn't show up and help any.
No, he didn't help me either. My wife was there helping, so... But I appreciated that, Paul, in all seriousness.
Mr. Chairman, in regard to the second resolution, number 18-2023, I move we approve that resolution.
Am I authorized to sign it?
And you are authorized to sign it.
And I'll second that motion.
Been moved and seconded that Resolution 18-2023, 2008 West Mary Fire Emergency Resolution, occurring on the third day of August of 2023 here in Fannie County, be approved. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda, we'll hear from Mackenzie Phillips. Next up on our agenda, we'll hear from Mackenzie Phillips from Development Services, Randall Estates. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. So first this morning, we have a request to approve an amendment to the development agreement for Randall Estates Rural Housing Incentive District. So the developer is requesting specifically to amend the eligible costs and feasibility study that in the development agreement that was approved on November 21st, 2022 by the board. So within the eligible costs, he's looking to increase a few of the expenditures that have increased since this was originally approved. So that includes the amounts for fencing, natural gas installation, the administrative fee and contingencies. And then he also wants to add some line items, including expenses for the highway entrance, electric trenching, fiber optic trenching, entrance signs, street signs, and a traffic impact study. So the existing total costs are $684,000, and that's what was approved on November 21st of last year, with a projected payback by 2031. So the proposed, the new proposed eligible costs would increase the total to $865,350 with a projected payback by 2035. So this is still within that 15-year lifespan of the RHID that was originally approved. So the alternatives before you today are the board may approve the amendment to the development agreement for Randall Estates as proposed, two, the board may, may approve the amendment with changes, and three, the board may not approve the amendment, and staff recommends alternative one.
Questions from the commission? I have one, not hearing any. Of Randall Estates, this RHID, this does not require paved roads. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
And other subsequent developments of RHID, are they requiring paved roads?
It depends on where they're located in the county. So this is located so far outside of the development envelope or development area that it's in, is considered a rural development, so it only requires gravel roads. And the development to the north, North Shore Estate or North Shore, they also have gravel roads, so it matches with the consistency of the, the area. The mileage requirement for the amount of roads?
What's the difference between three miles and four miles from the city?
So, like, just take, for example, the one that we're going to talk about next. It's probably about a mile, mile and a half away from the city limits. Also, as, the development to the north also has paved roads, so that would require them to have paved roads. There isn't necessarily a specific mileage requirement. It's identified as a map within the regulations on where you would have to be required to pave the roads or be able to have gravel roads.
I'm jumping the gun a little bit about the next discussion. As to the matter before the board is the amendment to the Randall Estates RHID development agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the amendment to the Randall Estates Development Agreement.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign, and the change is from 680, 684,000 to 865,350, payback by 2020, excuse me, 2035.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Been moved and seconded that the amendment be approved and shared a sign with the eligible cost being raised to 865,350 with a projected payback by 2035. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Mackenzie, you're not going very far. Item on the agenda is for the consideration of a resolution to establish a new rural housing incentive district, RHID, located at northeast corner of Third and Rodkey. Proceed, please.
Okay, yeah, the board is asked to approve Resolution 17-2023, which is a resolution of findings and determinations to establish a new rural housing incentive district. As, as you mentioned, it's at the northeast corner of Third and Rodkey Road. This is the first step of the RHID process. Most, so, when we went through this with Randall Estates, they had already gone through this process with identifying multiple areas throughout the county as potential RHID sites. This time, this wasn't included in those original identifications, and so we have to start with this first before we can move to the, the development agreement stages. So this property is approximately 136.19 acres, and the developer intends to, at this time, build this out for single-family homes with private water wells and septic systems. If the board chooses to approve the resolution of findings today, then we, staff will then send this off to the Secretary of Commerce for approval. Once they've approved it, then this is identified as a RHID potential site, and then we can move forward with the rest of the RHID process. So the alternatives before you today are the board may approve the RHID resolution of findings, or the board may not approve the RHID resolution of findings, and staff recommends alternative one.
Discussion. Questions from the board?
Question. On your map that's up on our screen, that field seems to be, is that a easement for a gas line or something that kind of divides that property right through the east-west?
Are you talking like?
Is that where the cursor, cursor is right now?
Oh, no, that's just the difference in aerials. There was newer aerials to the, the south of that line than the ones to the north. There is an easement in that northwest quarter that is for a drainage ditch, so that kind of separates that from the rest of the, the land. There's a gas line, too?
Yes, high-pressure gas line will not be moved.
Yeah.
And that's the one in the northwest corner? Northeast corner?
It bifurcates the property, sir.
Oh, okay.
There's also this, is that a drainage ditch, or is that an irrigation ditch?
Believe it's a drainage ditch. Farmer's ditch. Farmer's ditch, yeah.
Well, this property does present a few challenges, but I, I would be happy to offer the motion to start the process with the RHID development process. So I'll offer that motion.
There's a pending motion. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Commissioner Jones. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution to make the findings to establish a new rural housing incentive district, and yes, there's going to be some discussion. Why is it that this RHID is requiring of this developer to have paved roads in an unimproved area?
So as I was mentioning before, there's, and I'm sorry that it's not included in this packet, there is a map that shows where the, there's two different maps. There's a development envelope map that's identified in the comprehensive plan, and then there's also the development areas that are identified in the subdivision regulations. So this property is, is, I believe, I'm not sure if it's in the development envelope, but it is identified as in the development area. So also within our subdivision regulations, it does identify that new developments must be consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. I, it's, I'm paraphrasing that. It doesn't say that exactly, but since the development to the north is, does have paved roads for the majority, there's one road in there that is gravel, that does have paved roads, and Third Street is paved. This is also going to be required to be paved. And it's in an area that potentially in the future could be added into the city limits. And so because of that, we want to make it as close to the city standards as possible. It won't be required to have, at least in previous discussions with the developer, we had told him that he wouldn't have to do any curb and guttering, but it would have to be paved roads.
Any other discussion or questions with regard to the pending motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You, too.
No, no, for you.
I missed? So I missed two? It's only 28, seven percent. Two out of seven?
I haven't signed any of those.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, I thought?
None. That's 0 for. Ms. Charge, do I have to sign this even though I voted no?
Yes.
Notice how legal counsel jumped right on that one?
I noticed that. I don't know that we had this one. You guys didn't sign that one. Where did that come from? It was in the packet. One check.
Well, it didn't have a, it didn't have a tag on it.
But it's a reissued check that we got to authorize.
Since I don't know where that was, it's going to be ordered.
Okay, next on our agenda is to hear from Kelly Munyon with regard to proposed changes to our benefit.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kelly Munyon, Human Resource Director. So I'm back this morning to ask the board to consider changes to an updated leave policy with some additional requested information from the last time I was here. I'd like to talk through each of these changes. The first three, Tyler, can you go on? The first three slides were from the last presentation and do show the chart that we are proposing for the PTO. So PTO will be the, the first request. This is a transition from sick and vacation to a PTO model. Currently, we are using sick and vacation interchangeably. I do believe that moving to PTO will allow for ease of administration, also will create one pool for employees to use to take the time off at their discretion. County policy and departmental policy will still govern the requirements for calling in or preapproval of leave. The PTO bank will initially be populated with each employee's current vacation balance that they have on the books. With the PTO model, we then ask for an extended sick leave bank. The extended sick leave bank initially would be populated with each employee's current sick leave balance, and then will continue to be populated at the end of the year with any excess over the max allowed based off longevity. Currently, this is being done January 1st of each year. We'd also ask that this rollover happen November 1st with your approval. The third request, last time, there was a discussion about workers' compensation and moving that to an employer-paid benefit. And from what was said last time was that might not have been allowed. I did contact legal counsel, our employment attorney, and also the Kansas State Department of Workers' Compensation, Department of Labor. There is nothing wrong with the request of moving this to employer-paid. Currently, the employees are having to use their sicker vacation for a work-related injury. So, and I also would like you to know, we did provide some past history of our workers' compensation, and we have very few that were actually on temporary disability payments from work comp. And I do take pride in getting employees back to work and finding work that will fit the restrictions given under that. The next request we have is for employees to be able to use the employee clinic, which is currently GrowWell Clinic on the clock. This would encourage use of the clinic for personal reasons, but also GrowWell is identified as our initial work comp provider for these appointments would be on the clock as well. Employees would still clock out and back in from their appointments, but as long as the notice received in HR and the employee came directly back to work, the time would be given back and coded as wellness leave for tracking purposes. This should also encourage more use of the clinic and less claims to our group health plan. So far in 2023, the average number of appointments GrowWell is seeing each month is 226, and to date, since inception, they have seen just under 4,200 total appointments. 161 of those were pre-employment, 113 were work comp, so those were not billed to our work comp insurance. That left approximately 3,900 appointments that have not been billed to our group health plan. The next request, because the current move from sick and vacation to PTO is not giving the employees exactly what they're earning today, we would request one additional personal day be given to employees annually. Currently, they're receiving a flat number of sick and vacation. We would move that to a percentage based off scheduled hours in a pay period. So we are asking that this one additional personal day be given to employees to use at their discretion, again, following county policy for requesting the leave. This leave would be unable to be banked or paid out upon separation from employment. It must be used within each calendar year. The next request is for bereavement leave to be moved to an employer-paid for the, for three days for each employee. This would only be for immediate family members. Immediate family members identified by policy as spouse, children, parents, siblings, grandparents, grandchildren, and the same to the employee's spouse. The benefit is one small way to show some compassion, and the loss of an immediate family member can reduce stress on an employee when they may not have time to use or have to worry about having time unpaid in a time when they should be grieving. in a time when they should be grieving. Next would be a shared leave program. Currently, we do not have anything in place, and having little to no leave in a catastrophic event happen can be devastating emotionally and financially. We have had requests made from employees to receive an advance of pay or receive time off from another county employee's bank. With no policy in place, we would like to establish a formal policy with guidelines for such a program. The requesting employee would make a written request to Human Resources and Administration, provide the required medical documentation, and having been good stewards of their own leave could be approved for this program. Requests for shared leave would, of course, maintain confidentiality, and requests would be sent out very vague in that an employee has been approved and is in need for an approximate number of hours. The donated leave is all voluntary from donating employees' PTO banks. Limits on donating and receiving would be in place and would be on a first-in, first-out basis. This leave would not be subject to payout by recipient in a case of separation of employment. And then last is the additional holiday. Although this request may be considered more of a pay policy than a leave policy, I do believe it falls a little on both. All employees are provided 10 days of holiday pay whether the holiday falls on a regular working day or not. So with this practice continuing, the request is being asked to incentivize those actually working the holiday and receive time and a half for the hours worked in addition to the approved holiday time. For these requests, with the exception of the holiday pay, the only fiscal impacts, as we already budget for each employee to work 2,080 or 1,040 for a benefit-eligible part-time employee, these benefit moving to employer-paid would cause little to no financial impact. The only thing that I could see was a little more PTO paid out at the time of separation. But this could also happen under the same current policy as low staffing levels are not allowing for desired time off. The holiday pay, however, at time and a half would be an additional financial impact, assuming that these positions within the shift work departments are filled and there are no vacancies. There would be a potential for an additional $66,277. This was also calculated at the highest wages in these positions, therefore assuming the highest-paid workers are the ones also working the holiday. The alternatives are that you approve all leave as presented today with an effective date of January 1, 2024. Second, approve any combination of the leave benefits as presented today with an effective date of January 1, 2024. Or three, take no action, decline all updates to leave benefits as presented, and affirm the policy as it exists. Staff, including department directors, and the approval of county administration, recommend alternative one, approve all leave benefits presented with an effective date of January 1, 2024.
Questions for Kelly on the proposed changes?
Kelly, on the, you said budget impact was going to be minimal, or?
I don't, I don't believe there will be any to anything other than the holiday. We already budget for all employees in a minimum of 2,080 or 1,040 for benefit-eligible part-time.
Okay, and then also on the wellness clinic visits, they have to be pre-approved or they just clock in and clock?
No, they would clock in and clock out, so they're off the clock for the travel time as long as the employee came right back. GrowWell does it for schools and for other employers already. They will just provide a note of the appointment time and the time the employee left the clinic. If they came directly back to work, they would be given that time back as wellness leave.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
For Kelly, I have one for our administrator, so I didn't know if you wanted to keep them.
I think we'll just keep on going. Do you have an administrator question? Go.
This is to the administrator who, in my mind, is accountable for the performance of the entire organization. And I know I asked this question partially, or at least somewhat, the last time we visited, and that is, I look at employee benefits as a way to recruit and retain employees. And in your mind, as you're responsible for the entire organization, do you see this helping us in our recruitment and retention? Because we talk about that each and every time. We're talking about it during budget time, about open positions. We can't get people, you know, to fill those positions and so forth. Do you see these changes as a way to help enhance our ability to recruit and retain?
I believe the PTO program in itself is an advantage to both the county and the employee just from the mere fact that they may utilize that time off however they deem. Whereas you currently have two pockets of leave time, your sick leave and your vacation. So this gives them much more control, if you will, on how they utilize that. Same way with your holidays and the additional personal day off. Those are all, I think, attractive to young talent that may be looking at us for employment.
And then my part B to that question is, based on your experience with other county and city governments and so forth, this is fairly much in line with how other governmental agencies are handling their employee benefits, is it not? Or am I correct on that?
Correct. There are many that have gone to this.
PTO.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions, Commissioners?
Only a quick question. Is this effort seen as a vehicle to maybe keep employees on a payroll rather than the continual turnover? Is it, is it seen as an enhancement to work benefits, I guess is a better way of putting it?
Yes, I believe so.
All right, so here goes the part about work comp. I don't think that we ought to change what we are going to supplement. When an employee has an injury, there's a statutory penalty for the first week that they're off work. They're not paid by us. They're not paid by work comp. I don't think we should change that policy. Two is, is that while they're receiving temporary total disability, the insurance under state law only pays two-thirds of their average weekly wage. Are you suggesting that we pick up the difference?
Yes, sir.
I'm not in favor of that. And two is, is there, three is, is that the bereavement leave, is that for parents and children? Or is that extended family? How are you going to describe that?
The policy is clear about immediate family, and that's children, siblings, parents, grandparents, grandchildren, and then the same relatives to the spouse.
And how much paid bereavement leave do you get a year?
There were three days, and anything in excess would be charged to the PTO bank. So it's three days for an immediate family member. If it wasn't immediate family, they would take PTO.
I'm not in favor of it. The shared leave program seems to be wonderful if our county employees wish to share that. And the additional holiday pay helped me better understand how that has a $66,000 price tag to it.
It, it would be time and a half. Currently, we're just paying employees that work on the holiday, their regular time. And then we have about three departments that they will either float the holiday or go ahead and just pay the additional eight hours of holiday pay that's approved. And the departments had asked for, if the shift worker does not work the holiday, can we not give them a holiday pay? Well, that is not fair to that shift worker. If you're giving me, myself, I don't work on Saturdays, but if a holiday falls on a Saturday per policy, you give me Friday off with pay. I don't think we should treat employees differently, shift workers versus regular employees. And so if we're going to do something to incentivize those that are actually working the holiday, we're asking for time and a half for just their time for working that day. They would also get the eight hours in addition to of the holiday pay that's approved.
We have certain folks that just have to work every holiday. I mean, the farmer who milks cattle on Christmas Day. You have to man the ambulances. You have to man the jail, whether it's Christmas or New Year's Day. So what you're suggesting is, is that we now increase their pay 50% because of the days that they must work because it falls on a holiday?
Yes, sir. Something to incentivize the employees being here for those days and willing to pick up a shift on those days.
I'd like to hear from the commission whether they want to take up these changes individually or vote on them as a package. What do you want to do, Min?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I was getting ready to make a motion to approve the changes except for the work comp. And that's, I mean, that's where I am. I'm okay with the bereavement. I understand the incentive to work the holiday. But I, I, as you are, am concerned about any changes to the work comp. So I'm willing to hear from the others, but that's, that's where I stand at this point.
If you would like to break them down individual, I'm all right with that, Mr. Chairman. Each one owns itself.
I don't know what our timeframe is where this needs to be acted upon, but I think what I'm sensing is this is a desire of a person or two on the commission to discuss this for more than probably we have time today. Is this something to be tabled and then brought back up where we have time to address it item by item?
One of the things that is pressing is, is to have it done prior to November 1st for allocation purposes.
Correct.
So it'd be effective 1-1 of 2024. We also have Resolution 14-89 that says these are what our employee benefits are. We may have to revisit modification, revocation of that prior resolution. Mr. Jones, do you have a thought on this?
Question on the, just on, back to the work comp difference. What was the thoughts on, what, what was the input that you needed to be paid for that?
If employees are getting hurt on the job, they're, they're having to use their own leave to be paid. I think that we should pay that if it's something that has happened here. That, you know, it's something that's our fault. The other issue is we have employees, maybe a newer employee, that hasn't had the opportunity to build up any accrued leave. And so now, because of a work injury, something happened that maybe that was our fault. They're off work without pay, or they're just getting that two-thirds from work comp. And they're not being able to pay their benefits or keep things going either. I mean, we do keep the health insurance going, of course. They've got some supplemental policies, though. We've had just a couple in the past years that have actually been out over that seven days and getting the temporary disability payments. Most of our employees, we have been able to accommodate. If they cannot be accommodated in their department, I am bringing them up to administration. We have a lot of shredding in this building. We have a lot of filing, data entry. I've been very good at getting employees back to work. I don't see this as being a lot. But I, I don't feel it's fair to charge the employee or to see an employee go leave without pay because they haven't had an opportunity to get enough leave built up and something happens.
Are we disincentivizing safety or are we encouraging safety on the job by doing this?
Yeah, I mean, I guess, no, I, I get what you're saying, but also that's where it comes down to, you know, management. And we've got the safety committee going. We've got Paul, who's been out in departments, you know, looking at things. We've had, and he's brought DHS in. He's brought K-Work in to look at things within departments. So I think we are doing things. Unfortunately, there are times that accidents are going to happen, especially when it comes to something in the jail, when you're dealing with humans. I mean, there's nothing that we could do about the biting and the fighting and, and all that happens over there.
Kelly, I want to applaud your efforts of accommodating injured workers and getting them back to work and accommodated positions during their recovery. There was a time in Kansas workers' compensation law where that was required. Our legislature decided to take that away from injured workers. There's not very many things that they've ever added to the injured liver, injured workers bunch. But injured workers' compensation is no-fault insurance. It's not county's fault. Rarely is it the work lawyer's fault. There are situations for which I can understand that. But where we're at is we need to either take these line by line or take them as a bunch with a motion to exclude workers' compensation.
Well, Mr. Chairman, with a comment, and then I will make a motion. I, I am always concerned about what are we incentivizing? What kind of behavior are we incenting? And I believe that in the workers' comp issue, it's taking care of a very few and incentivizing the wrong behavior. So with that comment being made, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we update our leave policies as the bullet points say in our memo, excluding the workers' comp bullet point beginning January 1 of 2024.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it, getting this discussion started.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the bulleted items and change our policy to a paid time off policy as set forth. Implementation, implementation date of January 1, 2024. calculation date as of November 1.
Thank you.
2023. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Ms. Schardt, since the majority of the commission approved the resolution changing the paid time off benefits, would you please review Resolution 14-89 and see whether we need to make any changes in the, in order to comply with the decision made with regard to paid time off?
I believe so.
And report back to us on the 21st, please, with a recommendation. Next up, Mr. Administrator or Assistant Administrator on ARPA funds. What are we doing here, sir?
We have a couple of requests for you this morning. First one is a request for transfer from the ARPA, where the ARPA funds are into the Youth Prevention Services Community Services Center Building Fund. And it's due to an omission in, at the end of '22. We omitted, we did not make a transfer as scheduled from the general fund into that fund. So we actually spin it down more than what was anticipated. And that is a building fund that is used to maintain that facility down there. The request is use ARPA funds to transfer into that $26,000.
Very good. Questions of the administrator with regard to the matter before the commissioners?
This has been done in years past as well.
Been done in the years past, and we've, we've made the transfer in '23. We just did not get it done in '22.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize the use of ARPA funds, $26,000, in the amount of $26,000 for reimbursement to the CSC Building Fund.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the transfer. Moved and seconded to approve the transfer of $26,000 in ARPA funds to replenish and refund the CSC Building Fund for twenty-two expenditures. Further comments, inquiry, or discussion?
And I would just clarify that we should spell that out in the motion, Community Services Center, but that was my fault.
I'm sure this second agrees. Just Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, very good.
Yes, you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second request is encumbering of $60,000 from the ARPA funds. That's to be utilized for management fees and reporting services that is being conducted by I-Parametrics. We're still required to do that year-to-date or program-to-date. We've spent just under $16,000 for those services. If any of you recall, we are allowed to spend up to five percent. We've only spent at this point in time less than a quarter of a percent. We feel that allocating or planning on up to one percent of the total amount that was allocated in ARPA funds would be sufficient to meet those needs. Anything that is not spent then goes back to be re-appropriated. So once again, it's a request of $60,000 to be encumbered for that purpose.
They oversee all the
Reporting and
Reporting and everything to
Yes.
This payment is falling in line with what we've done with the federal funding before.
Correct. Yes.
When you're ready, I would offer a motion.
Ready.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I have moved that we approve the expenditure authorized $60,000 to be encumbered to pay for our consultant, the consultants.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize $60,000 of ARPA funds to be encumbered to pay the remaining consulting and reporting fees. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Dory, we have a meeting scheduled?
Yes, sir.
I could be wrong, but I heard that Dr. Marshall, Senator Marshall is going to be in town. Have you heard that?
I have not.
Today?
Surprised.
Me too. I was very surprised.
Haven't heard you name.
They're on August break, so I'm not, I wouldn't be surprised.
Okay. Anything else, Dory, on the upcoming schedule of events and meetings?
Nothing specific.
Also in our reports from the fire chief is our reports as to action and incident statistics. I didn't require Fire Chief to be here today. So if anybody has any questions, feel free to get ahold of Mr. Ursay. Next up, we have from McKenzie. Do we have any further updates? McKenzie Phillips, thank you.
Good morning again. McKenzie Phillips, Development Administrative Coordinator. I have one update on Randall Estates. We did receive a copy of the concept acceptance for the Randall Estates entrance from KDOT. So it says that construction cannot begin until a highway access permit has been received by the property owner. So we'll be reaching out to him and seeing if he's received that yet, and then we will move forward.
Very good. Anything else?
Nope.
Very good. Questions for McKenzie before I dismiss her? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Robert and Jenny, do you guys have anything to report?
Just a few things. As you are aware, we're wrapping up twenty-four budget, and we'll be meeting this a little bit later on today for some more comments, additional comments for the commission. On that, we do have a hearing next meeting for the three sewer districts. We continue to, we've handed out architectural information both to Commissioner Dries and Commissioner Pischny that we'll try and get some dates from you, your availability, so we can set that time with the three consultants as I'm looking at Sheriff Mike. So if we can get those today sometime, so we can get that wrapped up, we'll interview them as well. Try and come up with a consensus on who to go with.
All right. And what's our timeline on that?
It's based upon when everybody can meet here. I think all three of the architectural firms are available now. I think they had some vacation times that they were dealing with. I think we're all caught up here on meetings and leave time, so we're ready to move forward just as quick as can be on that.
September fifth meeting too early to be making the decision on that?
I don't, I hope not. I don't think so. I think that's what we're shooting for.
Does that sound all right to Mr. Dries? Mr. Pischny?
Yeah, I had given Sheriff some dates earlier, but are those still in play? Because they were this week, weren't they?
Hi, Sheriff Warren.
Mike Warren, Sheriff. Yeah, I think we moved that back. We had a third architect that kind of came on late at a request, and I was gone myself. So I think we had decided to discuss it, get something set stone this week, I hope, so we can move forward. And yes, have that by the September fifth.
I just want to keep it moving in the right direction.
Sheriff, I'm open to anything this week and everything. Just Wednesday morning next week is the only conflict I have, so.
Okay.
Anything this week excluding Wednesday of next week?
And I know from talking to the architects, they're wanting to get this. And I, two out of the three, I had proposed to them possibly this week, and I think they're good with that, too, so.
Wednesday or Thursday are my best days this week.
I'm here till the end of the year.
Let's get it done, and so we can move on it on September fifth. We'll plan on that. Ms. Schardt says, County Councilor, do you have anything to report to the commission? So the fun one is, is tax sale.
Yes, working through that one on the side outside of this. I should have, just like with everybody and their vacation stuff, summer's always an interesting time when you have three kids that have different things. So I'm working on it.
Understand that. Walking in a boot can't help, but a tax sale is something that I think needs to happen in this county. We have far too many properties that have delinquent taxes more than three years, and we haven't had one. And we need to remind people that we're a voluntary pay system with consequences. And if there is no consequence, suddenly there's no payments. I want to assist the treasurer in making those delinquencies go away. So we need your best effort on that, please. Anything else from commissioners to the county councilor? All right. We will shift gears then to commissioner reports. Go left to right. Commissioner Jones?
I have a kind of a handful, Mr. Chairman. The county fair had a opportunity to spend a few hours down there over a couple of days and one of those days selling tickets. I think that Roxanne and the crew need to be commended for an outstanding fair and I'm going to guess one of the bigger attendance crowds that you've ever had. Everything kind of worked out well, that the rains came so the farmers could come to town and the weather started off a bit cooler. But it was impressive. Also had a library board meeting. And then an IMA meeting, and I don't know whether we're going to get to that here a little bit on our budget or not, but I'm assuming so. But the insurance every year goes up. And I think the percentage I recall out of the IMA meeting was about thirteen percent raise. Does that sound right? So, folks, that's one of those bills that we have to pay, I guess. Also, the Fannie County Economic Development fifth Monday meeting, Lana had a good meal and a good program, and it was interesting. I don't quite understand yet where we are on daycare, but that, it keeps getting put off and put off and put off. Carol Fry, State Fire Marshal's office, and also on the fair board, told me that that approval for the daycare center from the state fire marshal came on July the tenth. And it sounded like from your meeting the other day that somewhere in the fall, that's going to open up as a daycare center. Is that correct?
Lana, would you address the microphone and Commissioner Jones's question, please?
Happy to do so. Lana Devol, Fannie County Economic Development Corporation. I also serve on the Fannie County Child Care and Early Learning Network Board of Directors. Yes, the, we were waiting on the updated fire marshal approval to go into the KDHE application packet. And the KDHE representatives have been out and done their, what is considered the last walk-through non-licensing with the staff at the childcare facility. So at this point, it would appear that we'll have a license in hand in either August or September. We're certainly hopeful sooner rather than later.
Okay.
While you're there, don't go away. We have an executive director for that early childhood network?
That is correct. Jeanette Turpin, who presented at the fifth week meeting last week, has taken the position of executive director. Jeanette was formerly, she's got a master's in early childhood education, very well-versed in childcare provision and in high-quality early childhood education. So we feel blessed to have her on the team. She was formerly the teacher for the Early Childhood and Education Pathway at Garden City High School. So she's got some really great folks that she's trained over the years that will now have the opportunity to work in childcare within the community. So we're excited to have her on board. And we've also got the director for that particular site who also attended the meeting. So you were all able to meet her. Her name is Esther Penya, so.
Thank you, Lana.
Thank you.
Anything else?
One other thing, more of a question than a report. Back in days past, when we had a road and bridge department director, we also had with that Mr. County Administrator a schedule, if you will, a tentative schedule of road, blacktop road maintenance. We're going to do this this year, this another one next year, and so on. And I bring that up because I had a question from a patron and a taxpayer out south wanting to know if we are aware of the terrible potholes in Old Highway eighty-three? And when is that going to be worked on again? And I couldn't tell her what the schedule is. Can you help me out a bit?
Yes, and I may have McKenzie come up because I know we're going out to bid on some of that stuff right now. Trying to figure out what, how we can move forward on that.
McKenzie?
So we, Highway eighty-three is one of the ones that we have scheduled next. That, I believe Jones and Anderson. We are waiting for us to get an engineer on staff so that they can review the proposals being sent out or the requests being sent out before we go forward with that. But we are working on a few roads right now, and Highway eighty-three is one of them. Old Highway eighty-three.
This year?
Hope, it might, yeah, we're working on it this year. It might be next year depending on the weather, so it
I promise her I'll call back, and so that helps me.
Yeah.
Thank you, McKenzie.
You're welcome.
Yes, if you remember last year, you did not, you were authorized not doing any overlayment, asphalt overlaying.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else in follow-up? Okay, very good. Mr. Dries?
No report really. Been harvesting vacationing, so the road reports, road complaints is always, several of them. I passed those one.
Very good. Commissioner Jones?
No report. Been traveling.
Commissioner Pischny?
You know, want to report on your dining and, no, I'm kidding. I, well, just first thing is I have attended planning commission, economic development meetings and so forth. And most of that that pertains to us comes in this room as a follow-up. The primary thing I want to talk about just briefly is reporting back to you from the NACO conference. I missed a day of it because of the storm that we had. Our flight was delayed till the following day. So I missed a couple of workshops that I had hoped to attend with regard to rural caucus and so forth. But the conference was well-attended. It was well-organized. And the meetings that there is, excuse me, the sessions that I attended were very meaningful and had substance to them. And so the thing that I wanted to bring back to you is the main topics throughout the few days of the NACO conference this year were broadband expansion and especially into the rural areas, which we're working on here in Kansas. The opioid and fentanyl crisis epidemic throughout the country. And I shared some handouts and so forth with Shrudy this morning that I brought back from one of the booths that might help her with some posters and helping young children. What pills should you buy and what should you not buy and so forth? Affordable housing, there were a number of sessions on affordable housing. And the one takeaway that I had from that is there was quite a bit of conversation about concentrated housing, apartment buildings and so forth. And I know we're working on one project that will have some of that. However, and I hesitate to use the word unintended consequence because I think we can avoid some unintended consequences with many things. But the other side of the coin was brought up, and that is will, what effect will concentrated housing have on mental, emotional, physical health versus single-family housing and so forth? So due to space requirements, both in smaller communities and in cities, concentrated housing is being looked at. But on the other side of the coin, making sure that there's things that will address some of those other aspects of life. And then the fourth thing was the mental health and a lot of different discussions on the mental health aspect. And then lastly, there was a session on financing, and the speaker didn't show up on the county finances. And I had hoped to hear some insightful things about that. And the speaker didn't show up, so we adjourned. But the last thing is, and I'm going to visit with the administrator and a couple of other people here in the county. NACO has a program called Three Plus One that they did a presentation on that helps assess, are we getting the best bang for our idle funds buck? And I'll visit with our treasurer and administrator and so forth. And it's something that doesn't cost us anything to have that kind of an assessment. So we'll be looking at, are there, and I, Trista, yeah, Trista's still in the room. She's doing a nice job of maximizing the return. But they've found even in these cases, with what we're doing, NACO's program can even, might, or might even find some additional dollars that would help supplement our general fund. So we'll see if that might help us. Like I said, the four main, the four main topics were kind of the theme throughout the NACO conference. Definitely worthwhile. Oh, one last thing. This year, the Kansas group got together in a little caucus one, late one afternoon. And that was good because there were Johnson County people, Celine County, Dickinson County, some other places represented across the state. state, so it gave us a chance to visit for an hour or so and, and touch base about what's happening across Kansas. That's it, Mr. Chairman?
On that, on that topic, Dory, you sent us all an email that Kansas Association of Counties was having its annual meeting?
Yes, I believe in December.
In December. Who amongst this commission would like to go, and?
I plan to go unless I get excommunicated or something, I'd, you know.
Communicate, okay. Commissioners, I think we ought to have a representative at the state meeting, I think we ought to pay the cost of it, and we'll take that up by formal motion and so forth on the twenty-first, so that gets set. If anybody else wants to go, one representative of a five-member commission, this is an important meeting, also has to do with also the legislative aspects of our Kansas Association of Counties, and it's a wonderful opportunity to network with fellow commissioners and administrators from across the state.
And this year it is in Wichita.
Well, that'd be the Western Kansas Seminar then, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, well, if anybody else wants to go, please let, let us know, and let the Administrator know, so we can get it on the agenda for the twenty-first, get it authorized. My report is, is that Compass, Arima Health, I sit on that board as assigned from this commission, and some great things are really happening over there. As the community mayor may not know, they had their really wonderful designation, which increased revenue, increased their ability to perform services for mental health here in southwest Kansas, and I applaud the board and administration of Compass in providing these essential mental health services. We don't have a confinement facility for mental health services, and I know the sheriff stepped out, but his representative is still here. One of the programs that the large communities have done is to have available mental health counselors available at critical times to assist law enforcement in those contacts with the citizenry that have nothing to do with the commission of crimes, but instead dealing with people that are suffering from mental health issues. And so, whatever we can do, as it is our constitutional duty to provide for the general welfare of our citizens and our people in Finney County, the continued work in, in providing mental health services and support to law enforcement that are the law on the street to help keep the peace, we should pursue every avenue that we can to provide more services to those people in need. I did also attend the fifth Monday meeting and enjoyed the presentation. Once again, everyone should know that childcare is an essential requirement, and this commission may be called upon to do more to assist in the nurturing of that new network, the Finney County Child Network. I think that it's vitally important to our workforce and to the vibrancy of our community to have quality care for our children, and I could go into and expand in great detail how important quality daycare is for younger children, but I won't, and I'll leave that to the experts in the network and as economic development and our other business partners in the community to continue to work to achieve quality daycare for working parents and their children. I don't have anything else, this concludes our agenda for today. Yes, sir?
I buried a couple memos here that aren't related to NACO. One is with, with regard to the LABTR subject, KAC and the KCCA are doing all kinds of talking points and history and Excel spreadsheet. On KAC's website, there's a legislation, legislative toolkit with regard to that, some templates. I, if, if it's okay with you, I will visit with the administrator a little bit, because there's also an Excel spreadsheet that we can plug in specific numbers into some of those templates with regard to Finney County, and I think we need to do that as we're proceeding with the budget thing.
Can we take that up in the work session?
We can do some of that in the work session, but I wanted to bring it up here in our open session, that that's available, but we can expound on that if we want to. And then the other, I assume each of you got this letter from Go Rail with regard to a federal legislation, where Congress is wanting to raise the weight limit of heavy trucks on, on roads, in a pilot program, and they're asking for us to stop this before it happens on our local roads. So, I, I just think it's something that we need to take under advisement, and do we get involved in that, because it will have a, an effect on local, you know, on county roads, so. Did each of you get a copy of that email?
We did.
Yeah, so anyhow, I think we need to pay attention to that, so that it doesn't adversely affect us in the county.
Commissioner, you used an acronym that I'm aware of, but the public may not be, explain what LABTR is.
Local Ad Valorem Tax Reduction, it's the obligation the legislature set for itself years ago, and it hasn't fulfilled it for the last twenty years. It's to help, help minimize the effect of property tax on the burden, as a burden for our taxpayers, with some funds coming back from the state to offset property tax dollar for dollar, so.
Well, we wouldn't have to have the appraiser and the treasurer tell us that the state takes twenty-one point five mils out of Finney County.
I understand.
Just to remind everybody what nice lion's share they like to take and send it to Pika. How much are we expected to get back, Commissioner Pishney?
I would say it's probably zero, I, you know, I-
Well done.
Something in that neighborhood.
All right. Motion to adjourn the regular session, and we'll move immediately into the work session commencing at ten fifteen. Would you make that part of your motion, Commissioner Jones?
I just did.
Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
All right, any further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We'll take up work session at ten fifteen, please.